I guess that means it's starting. Okay, let's go ahead and call our school board work session meeting to order. On the line with the chair, we have board member Janice. And Heather, who's going to be our temporary board secretary listening in. And then Janelle and I in the room, and Mr. Marshall and our Azalea leadership staff, so. First up, we have our Azalea Middle School school presentation, so. Forward to hear from our principal, vice principal.
Thank you, thank you for having us. We've had a fantastic October with lots of really great events. The front cover kind of depicts some of that. Between sports and of course homecoming. We had the spirit week where they did pajama day and we did unity day, which is the students in the orange. Down in the right hand corner is our leadership. Kids made. Oh, not on that one. That's okay. We're on a different. So we're just on the first one. So we had a. So, so we just had a fantastic October. It felt really good with students coming together in the building and participating through homecoming. The one day that I totally thought, and I don't think we have a picture of there, that they weren't gonna get is Adam Sandler Day, but they totally got it and it was fantastic. And then the bottom right hand corner is just, it's broom pride. So. We're gonna go ahead and talk about. How Azalea is supporting relationships between staff and students. Between students, between staff members themselves, including staff members, parents, guardians and the community. We're also gonna talk about how we're supporting student success with the increased F E L, student self advocacy and self efficacy. High behavior expectations that we have improving academic rigor, which is through our, really, we're gonna talk about the M T S S process and student voice. Along with Azalea supporting staff success, which is through a culture of collaboration. Learning by doing our P L C work and additional training from the O D E. So Dr. Warnock is working on attendance, and so I'm gonna let her talk about that a little bit.
So we have had actually really great attendance. And our sixth grade in particular is ninety-three percent attendance rate. We're not seeing nearly the chronic absentee rate that I was expecting honestly, so. We're hoping to hold that. I attribute this attendance rate, we need to, kids are wanting to be asked. So this is actually since the beginning of, yeah, so our rates have been under ninety percent higher since the beginning of.
That's what I mean, like sixth grade is, is this like, I can't say captain. On any given day, ninety point three percent.
Exactly.
Got some questions anywhere that we see it.
We'll talk about discipline a little bit. So right now, just to give you a number to put it in perspective is we're, we're looking right now at the end of October at a hundred and eighty-eight. Referrals. Which seems like a lot. And, and it is. But I don't think, I, I think because we have. A whole new staff. New admin. That. I, I think it's because we're holding high expectations and we're holding students accountable to their behaviors. And we're holding that line consistently across the board that we're seeing the higher referral rate. So what I did was I, I went back and looked at previous years to see how far. Where that compares.
Same, same here last year, were you?
Well, twenty-one, twenty-two, we had fifty, right? Because we were still in COVID. In twenty-twenty-one, we had zero. In nineteen-twenty, they had ninety-seven. And in eighteen, nineteen, they had a hundred and seventy-eight. So. I expected us to see a little higher referral rate again because we're holding the line and we're holding students accountable. And we have a new admin staff and a whole new teaching staff. And so things that we are doing to improve that number. Is, you know, we're, we're. With supporting relationships is a big part of that. So we are working on a school-wide climate and culture where we have a feeling that all students belong. And that they should all be there. And teachers are working on building a positive culture and climate in their classroom. So one of the things that we've done is teachers are all standing at their doors, welcoming students in, calling them by name. High-fiving, elbow bump, fist bump. They have this little foot thing that they do. To help increase. Student belonging and, and the classroom culture itself. We're continuing to work with sound discipline on working towards those classroom meetings. And also building a better culture in, in our classrooms. There's something that you wanna add to? To that piece?
Well, I think what we're hearing to those students is they're really feeling or beginning to feel comfortable reporting themselves and reporting things that happen. So whenever we see an increase in comfort, like I feel pretty comfortable coming and talking to you and telling you, whether that's a teacher sometimes or whether it's one of us in the office staff. And then what happens is we do see more referrals because we're better able to look at those behaviors. Right? So because behaviors may have been under-reported earlier in the year, now they're starting to report, they're starting to feel comfortable with that. We've heard, we've actually heard that from students and parents, that they're, they feel comfortable that if something is said, we're actually going to do something about it. And that, that's not always discipline. Sometimes that's restorative practices and we're getting kids into a room where they can talk to each other and kind of work things out that way. Sometimes it is disciplinary. A lot of times it's just strategy building, you know, and, and helping students build the skills that they missed out on in this COVID period. Where they miss this really large chunk of social, emotional, however. And teaching them how to be in school. And I, I think that's really being successful and the relationships that we're able to develop with, with kids and students. And with our staff, and staff building relationships with students, so. I'm, I'm happy with where it's going.
So we did, so when a perfect example is that we had a parent who felt comfortable enough to come see us this evening right before the board meeting and bring their student. The student didn't want to report because. Past feelings about that is nothing was going to be done about it. They are coming to us now and talking to us, and we are having really good discussions around what is happening, how can we problem solve that? And then if necessary, holding students accountable for their actions to let them know where.
Success. That, you know, making things happen, helping students hear that things are happening. You gotta have show them that you're listening. And hopefully that's the brothers.
And that we're following. And, and I, and there's a large feeling that, that that. Or right or wrong, true or false, right? There's a large feeling around. That hasn't happened in the past, so why, why report it? Because it won't be taken care of. And so I think we're making some really fantastic rounds in that area, working with the community and parents and students. Are starting to really trust us and realize that you can come and talk to us, we are going to address it. Again, whether that is through restorative justice practice. Whether that be two students, whether that be a teacher and student, whether that be teachers.
We have lunch buddy groups that have started with our council somewhere that some of the students were really struggling with those social skills and being able to interact effectively and productively with each other. Our council has reached out, invited them to participate in the lunch buddy groups where they can have some more structured time on friendships and skill building. Which I think is really, really powerful for students. I'm also starting to hear at, for a little while, I heard you're not scary. And kids would like actually come to like, come to see me, just to see me. And he's like, well, this is like gonna work. And so we did. So I became more scary, yeah. So we implemented after-school detention and a Saturday school and have learned that. Will student services is not a place that kids want to come hang out. You know, and behaviors actually go down. So the other part of being consistent with our, our addressing of behavior is that now the students who. Participate in our behavior, they know there will be consequences as well. And so some of those behaviors have gone down. And I think we'll, we'll continue to see that.
It's been really powerful that Lorena and I are on the same page and, and. And how, if we set a precedence handling something in a certain way, then that is how we continue to handle that in the same situation. And so again, the consistency across the board is starting to make a difference in our message. Around that Azalea is a place where all students belong and that we believe that. And that we're going, we're going to treat each other with kindness and, and respect. And sometimes respect means not saying anything at all. And so, you know. You don't have to respond if someone says something negative to you. That's not okay that they're saying that. We're gonna go ahead and address that. But you don't have to up the ante by responding and helping the students with the skills in order to do that, right? Adults struggle with that at times. Some of our parents struggle with that at times. And so trying to help our students figure that out. So we, we're also starting an S E L group at lunch for our students who are really struggling. With the social and emotional learning and development because of COVID or whatever else is going on in their lives. We'll be sending permission slips home, getting parent approval for that. And so we have the lunch buddy group on Tuesdays, Thursdays. And so probably Sundays and Fridays, we'll be doing S E L groups based on student needs. And so Cara is implementing that and putting that together. We've also talked to the juvenile department. About possibly doing some classes around skill building and conflict resolution.
I'm gonna make a suggestion real quick. Janice is having a hard time hearing. Would you mind joining us for a minute? This is kind of a strange position. And maybe we could talk a little bit more towards the microphone over there. Get a better. Read on everybody. Crowd in here.
So part of that driving force for that is our panorama survey that we did and the data that we received back from that. Nathan, who's one of the consultants for Crown Apple, is helping us to separate that data and really taking a look at how we can use that to drive practices to help students. The other thing on here that we have is new clubs. We've got a couple of new clubs starting, which is super exciting. Electives. We have brand new electives for this year. And so we're, we're working on that. I have a principal advocacy group that I've started and so I have twenty-two students. And we had pizza today and had a fantastic conversation. So they have, we did a little bit of mapping. So our first meeting. They wrote down two things that are really going well at the school that they really like and are excited about. And then they wrote down two things that they feel are issues that need to be addressed. And so then what they did was they worked together collaboratively and they put those together if there were duplicates and then we put them up on pieces of paper and we discussed. Now pick two things that we're gonna work on as a team. And so one of them was bullying and it was around insults, threats and rumors. And that, that they have some concerns about that happening in the building. And so we're gonna start tackling that together and coming up with some solution from the student perspective. The other one was fascinating. They wanted to talk about eating outside. And so we, we talked about that. That was important to them. So we talked about that a little bit. Then today, we also had a great conversation around cell phones. So we're having some issues with students using their, so the policy is often away. So what is away? So right now, away is in your back pocket or in a sweatshirt. But it's off. However, what's, what's been happening is, is we found that there has been some pictures posted of other students that have clearly been taken up school. And as well as a couple of our teachers. And so we had a great discussion today about. Is away meaning in your backpack or locker? And so after we had this wonderful discussion. All twenty-two students were in favor of it's in your backpack or your locker. So then I took it to my staff meeting today. And so we had a conversation, same conversation with staff, what does that mean? And again, they agreed. Backpack or locker. And so between the student voice and the staff voice, we're moving forward with. I'm writing a letter to parents, I'm sending a one call, students are gonna be informed during pride next Wednesday, we'll remind them on Thursday and we'll implement that new process on Monday. And so it was just a really fantastic process to go through. And so I'm looking forward to doing more work with my student advocacy group. They signed up. It was open to everybody. Those were all the people that were interested. And then we're, I, I, I really wanted more like thirty. And so. They're talking to friends to see if they wanna come in. So we'll build from there. Strictly volunteer. So we had to sign up in front, the front office for about two weeks. And we just let students sign up and we announced it and we've been talking about it and they talked about it in pride. And so anybody who was interested can sign in. So I have some sixth graders, I have a lot of seventh graders, and then I have a few eighth graders. So it's been, it's great. They're fantastic. You wanna talk about this?
Sure.
Okay. If you're happy. I wanna do all the talking.
So for our student success, the, one of the major things that we're doing right now is looking back and around the survey and identifying specific students that. That may need to move to an upper tier of social emotional support. And we're focusing largely on self-efficacy. And we decided to focus pretty, I mean, not, we're not, it's not that we're not addressing other areas, but we're really, really addressing self-efficacy because self-efficacy impacts so many of the other areas that students need. So if they don't feel, you know, effective themselves, they don't feel like they have a voice, then sometimes the other areas of social awareness. And sense of belonging, those are also impacted. So self-efficacy is kind of a linchpin area that we can, that we can look at. We do have a new English language arts curriculum that our teachers are doing a fantastic job of implementing. And they're using something called blasts that where students get a prompt and they write for, they write every day in class with these blasts, which is really. Helpful practice. They're doing reading, they've done their benchmarking in terms of what skills do they have, what skills do they need for standards. It's, the curriculum is all mapped out to standards, which is standardistic as well. And within the curriculum, they can draw from those benchmark tests, they can actually drill down. And look at where standards where individual students might need some reteaching and need some help and support to be able to do better as well as if I have a whole. Class and there's one area that I need to focus on for the whole class. Our math department is starting to do their I R E testing. So again, some diagnostics so that we can see where students are at. And where we need to maybe do some reteaching and some support. And with those, we're really hoping to. To figure out, so with COVID in particular, there are a lot of gaps in learning. And we need to figure out where those gaps are before we can really push them forward to get them back up to grade level. And so the, the benchmarking allows us to do that, to figure out where gaps are. Our teams are working together. Our math content team, E L A content team, social studies team, they're working through the P L C process. They work weekly. Looking at their standards. One of the big things that I think will have a huge impact, not only on student success academically, but also student success socially and emotionally and with the behaviors that we're seeing. Is that our grade level teams are coming up with standardized procedures in their classrooms. So they're working together to say, we're all going to define tardy as.
So we, we did a similar thing in the staff meeting that we did with the student advocacy group and we have them as grade level teams again, talk about what's going wrong. Cause there's a lot of things that are going wrong in school. And then also where are the problem areas? And, and then coming up with solutions. And one of the solutions that they came up with was. Students don't know what to expect going from one classroom necessarily to the other. So having those standardized procedures as well as expectation takes the guesswork out of it. And then students will just get better because it will be consistent throughout the building throughout the day.
Yeah. So then another, another big. Initiative that we're doing is increasing our communication with families. And so we have a lot of new teachers concerned. And our new teachers, what we're trying to do is kind of help them with, what I've learned is that sometimes they don't know how to communicate with families. And so we're really trying to support them in learning, how do you have those conversations and making positive phone calls, both like making sure students, parents know when their kids are doing well. And then when, how do I have a hard conversation with a parent if, if the student is not doing very well? So we're working really hard to support, we're having. And so we have one teacher, for example, going sit with another teacher while that teacher was making some phone calls just to hear what it sounds like on the, the teacher's side of that. And then our work is increasing communication too with families from class to family. So an example of that, we discovered a social media group. That had some not fantastic things that students were seeing. In there. And so even though not all of it happened on campus, some of that happened on campus, they would put pictures that we can see that happened in classrooms. And in those cases, disciplinary action. We actually sat down with the families, you know. Whiteout, lots of whiteout of other students' names, lots of like covering up pictures so they don't see. We actually were able to sit down and have a conversation. I was like, this is what your student was participating in.
So fifteen, fifteen meetings that we have with families, having them come in with their student. Having a printout of their student post only, so only their name was shown, putting it in front of the parent and saying, here's what's, here's what's happening. So, so part of that was just informational and then there was some discipline in there for those students who were taking, because of the technology, policy, board policy. Of taking pictures and posting pictures of students at school. So. We, we've gotten, I think we have two or three more to do.
Three more.
Three more to do.
And so the, the benefit of that really is, you know, being able to come to a family and say, this is informational and there's no discipline happening here. We just wanna partner with you to help your student be successful. And then having students also be able to come out and say, well, I participate because, so now we have a better understanding of the root cause of the problem and start to. To kind of address that.
Probably through an educational lens.
Just curious, fifteen or so maybe, what percentage of your students were kind of surprised by what your student did versus didn't care versus I don't understand the reaction?
I, most of them were at minimum surprised by the language that was being used by their student. There, there were a couple that were not, not particularly surprised, but were definitely disappointed. And then I, we only had one who was actually, you know, actively. Defending their student's participation. And interestingly enough, in, in that situation, it happened to be the one who was participating the most. In there. So, you know, I, there was one parent who was like, well, this is an easy problem to solve. And, and some, some of it was really good information for me too, where sometimes we, we have students report that things have happened on phones and social media that they don't want to share with us. What has happened or pictures. So I learned that on one of the, the most popular apps, if they take a screenshot with their phone of what's being said or if they screen record it, it actually shows. In the application. So, so. Exactly. So that means we modify my process a little bit. So when a student comes in and says this happened on social media, I'm like, oh, can you show it to me? And then I just took a picture with my phone. It's so now we, we have, are able to actually move forward with that.
So students are becoming more comfortable with being able to share that information because they stay anonymous. There's no way for them to. We're adding a door to separate her office a little bit more. So when students are going in and out, other students are not seeing them. That's the other thing. And students can report through an email. They don't have to come in at four, say four in. It's all over the building. So. Again, I think that, that they're feeling, you know, much more comfortable in doing that. So we're being able to resolve, but really being able to help families and students resolve issues is really what we're doing. And becoming closer. We're, we've got exploring project-based learning and the, the reason that that is up there is number one, it's just great practices and keep students, you know, more engaged. In their learning. But as we move towards this, the mock block, which I know the high school talked about, we're doing that as well. Teachers will be better prepared to be teaching on a seventy-eight to eighty-minute block period of, of project-based learning. Instead of the traditional teaching, we can't stand in front of kids and lecture and then expect them to do some other things. I think our E L A curriculum is more set up for that right now, but the teachers are looking through that. The M T S S process, you know, we went to the fabulous training in Minneapolis. And we're working through the learning by doing book with staff and our guiding coalition. I met with those teachers the other day. We're working on rolling that out a little bit more. And then working through the M T S S process in how to deliver on-time interventions. And for students who are on grade level to keep them growing while at the same time, the students who are above grade level, keeping them engaged and moving them further as well. Also meeting the students who are lower where they're at with interventions in tier two. And, and bringing them up to grade level and how we're gonna do that. So that would be the tier two process. And then tier three would be, you know. Even more partnering with parents and, and working on, you know, how we're gonna do that. So then we're also supporting our students that are receiving E L Ds, so those who are your second language students, our five oh four students and our special education students. Making sure that through that M T S S process as well as meeting with. Special education providers that, that we're meeting all students needs through the M T S S process.
And M T S S stands for?
Multi-tiered systems of support.
So tier one would be, that would be something that impacts every single, those are like universal defined concepts that every student gets that same support. Tier two, these students need a little bit more. Tier three, these students will go up.
And then this year, and, and this may also be a, a little bit with our discipline data. I would have to dig into that a little bit deeper, but in the past at Azalea. Our, our special education students were being held out of core classes. They were going to a special ed class to receive E L A and MAP. We are fully integrated this year. So all of our special education students are integrated into classes. Our resource room students specifically are in a general education, English and MAP class. And being supported. Are we doing on time? I don't know how much time I have. I'm sorry. Supporting, supporting staff. We're having weekly staff meetings. And staff voice is, is really important. And again, we went through that process where, you know, staff recognizes. What's going on in the school and helping to problem solve what the solutions are and giving input for us to be able to work together. So we have a very collaborative process with staff and staff voice, which is fostering a culture of collaboration. Staff empathy meetings. So I am meeting with every single staff member individually. And my question is, how are things going? And then I sit in my lesson. And it is been really wonderful. There's a lot of really wonderful things that, that staff are saying and then they're able to voice their concerns in a safe environment. With no judgment and then we can problem solve together. Or if there's some action that I need to take, I can take that action and help them. And so that's going really well. I'm, I'm about three quarters of the way through. And so that's going really well and I'm about three quarters of the way through the staff right now, so. I am really enjoying that. Um, P L C process, we kind of already talked about, but that is also supporting staff. And Marina and I are in those meetings every Wednesday. Um, so. We're, we are splitting, she takes eighth grade, um, I generally take sixth grade and then we're floating in and out of, um, seventh grade to make sure that one of us is there to support staff. So if they have any questions or any concerns or anything that we can help with, we're available for them. And so we've cleared our schedule to make sure that we're doing that. Um, we're getting additional support from, um, Sound Discipline. Um, Helena is going to start, we had a great discussion today and Helena is going to be coming over to the building, we're writing a proposal. Um, and she's going to come over to the building and start a new teacher. Kind of it's the teacher helping teachers, if you've heard that before, but Helena is going to be doing that with the new staff. Um, in the afternoons and supporting them that way, then going into the classroom and doing observations where. Teachers are feeling like they're not being evaluated and then she can work through that process with them in that group in the afternoon about what she has seen and give feedback.
Kind of like coaching.
Yeah.
In general, I mean, just, I mean, we're talking from discipline to. Delivering a curriculum and all this kind of everything that goes on.
Yeah, yeah, it really will depend on what what that particular teacher needs. Right, and so some are are amazing with discipline or not so great with content and vice versa. You know, have room for phone.
So one of the things, and I probably should have talked about that earlier, but just, you know, out of transparency, I'm a little nervous. Um, it's been difficult in the building and and I don't think it's any secret that we lost three teachers right away. And so trying to get people in those classrooms to have that consistency, to be able to support students and us supporting them. You know, has has made things, I think that that also is contributing to, you know, a hundred and eighty-eight referrals. Um, but again. I think that we're stable, we have people in there with Helena's support and us continuing to go in the classes. Again, the building feels better and I think it's going to keep.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, how, if those staff members, they avoided subs right now or how are they attacking?
I I do, I have, um, well, I have three long-term subs. One of them is interviewed for the position, she's a licensed teacher. And so one of those positions will be filled with a licensed teacher that will be permanent. Um, and she's, um, you know, excited about being here. Um, the other two are, um, a long-term subs. Both of them are interested in getting their teaching credentials. So, a- and and again, stabilizing, um, having consistent procedures. Um, we've got, the curriculum is, is being, they're being helped with that curriculum right now. And I see at a certain point them being able to move and do that on their own. So.
Plus tap, I mean, I know the positions in your school, but there's a student around our district that I know who's nationwide is a huge problem trying to. Find qualified people.
It is, it is, and I, you know, I mean, transparency, I'm new in the position and I think that I have some learning to do around, um. I, that's not the reason we lost three people, but around hiring practices and just, and it is hard. And I went to the principal, New Principal Academy and I actually attended a hiring session. And they were talking about all the wonderful things they do for hiring, teachers doing lessons in front of kids and writing samples and. When we went to go talk as our group, every single one of them said, well, it'd be nice if we had applicants that we could actually. Right, and so that was a bigger district that was putting on that session and so it's, it's kind of like, okay. So I am excited, I, I do have a spent teacher that's coming, um, that's a contractor who's super interested in. Being part of the bookings community and is interested in possibly switching from being a contractor to a special ed teacher. So we'll see how that all works out. Um, so. Additional training, I've reached out to the O D E, um, and, um, to Winston Cornwall. He, um, he reached out to Kate Hildebrand and so we're going to do some additional training around. Um, Title Nine Sexual Harassment and Discrimination. And I think that our staff, especially since we have a lot of new people. Um, need that additional training, um, so that we're all on the same page and to support them. And so we'll be, um, working on that. I'm also reaching out to the, our Josephine County Sexual Response Team or sorry, who. Came out and worked with us last year, I'm also reaching out to them. Um, and, um, I've been talking with Mr. Marshall about. Um, the bullying and the harassment, um, and he gave me a book. From Newport School District had rolled out this program and it went very well for them and I'm perusing through that book right now. I'm going to now start having conversations about, is this something we want to start rolling out in our pride class and and through our classes to educate students? And so, and teachers. Um, mock block, as you know, with mock block, um, that will happen. And so we're playing with that schedule right now, so.
Is it take a bias, those are we?
It's three weeks.
It's between Thanksgiving and winter break.
What is a mock block?
Great question, so, um, a block schedule is the one that we're working on, it's called the flex block. And it is Monday, they have all seven classes. Tuesday, they have eighty-minute classes and they only have three classes and then they have co-works. Um, right now, the high school has a ten-minute passing period. Um, Wednesday, they do three classes, Thursday and Friday, they do three classes. But on Friday, there's this interesting eighty-minute flex block that's going to be used for student intervention time. And so Marina and I are going through that schedule right now, we need to make some tweaks so that it's conducive to what our building needs. And so another, another thing with student discipline is, is in that discipline, we're seeing high incidences in the hallways. So we have a six-minute passing period right now, which is probably too long. Um, so we're looking at for second semester, changing the schedule to reduce that passing period time. I think that's also going to help with, um, the referrals that we're having right now. Um, and then we're, we're playing with mock block schedule again to make sure that we don't have really long passing periods and we're increasing class time.
So, so the mock part is just testing it out?
Yeah.
So they're going to pilot it both at the middle school and the high school and then evaluate after that three-week experience to. Determine if that's what they want to move ahead with, uh, for the subsequent school year.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, so. I don't think that asked this one, but, um. I mean, most of us in the years have looked through.
Walking back and walking in, yes.
Yeah, and, um, so, I, I guess I would like to hear how it goes before. The high school and middle schools next round here, like I'd like to get a, even if it's a brief update for me because.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, I mean, I'm, I'm going to admit it, but I thought it was awful. I'm sorry, and and students, and I think it would be harder even at your, the younger, because kids don't have the. Capacity to.
Well, the traffic, I mean, there's, there's. There, and there's a variety of, of even block schedules that are used in, in Oregon's schools. You're correct, I think primarily we see them at the high school level. Um, and really the, the big driver for middle school needing to participate in the pilot round is because of the shared students. Uh, and so my, my directive to both Yan and Vicky is we need to accommodate that with whatever schedule we come up with. So that, you know, specifically the middle school students can access some of the high school, yeah, because. You know, we want, you know, not only like be able to take algebra or something like that at the high school, but in addition to like the, you know, welding and other sorts of things. So, so that'll be part of the work, whatever direction is, and they don't have to be to- totally mass schedules, but we have to account for that. So we don't want to make it that it. Right. Right, and that's, I mean, that's exactly why you want to pilot it and they're going to be debriefing from both families perspective, student perspective, staff perspective. Um, and that's what they, why both the middle school and high school, um, did a really amazing job with the in-service day. Of offering professional development to to help with that transition because it is, it's a different way of approaching, it's not just. Especially not, not to mention the alternate, kind of not the same schedule every day. But dealing with the longer block is not just doing the same thing and handing out more worksheets. It's, it gives you opportunities to look at instruction differently, to approach the day differently. And one of the potential benefits, um, like Vicky just mentioned, is. Able to do things that we're not able to do in your traditional schedule, like provide timed interventions. You know, elementary's been doing it, but they don't have, you know, schedules like the periods and things like that. So to provide opportunities for that and so again, I think it's great that they're. I mean, it's, it's a big lift to do the three-week pilot, but that should really give us. Some very specific information about how to proceed and we'll certainly follow up with the board on. Here's what was learned, here is the feedback, um, you know, and is there consensus one way or the other? Because, you know, my impression is, this could be a great experience to say, we don't want to go anywhere near it. It could be, we were fairly close with these modifications, it should work or it could be great, we think this will really help and and we want to work with it next year. So again, I, I, I think it's a much better approach than just saying, hey, let's do this. Uh, and then really not being thoughtful of, this does represent a different approach in a whole bunch of different ways, both for kids as well as. How, how folks use their time, um, if they don't have time every single day with a group of kids, if you have larger blocks of time. Um, and so it, it can be, you know, just like anything, it can be done very well or it can be a train wreck, it just depends on the planning and preparation. Yeah, it is.
Well, and this was born out of the, the scheduling committee that they had last year. And so that they, they did a lot of work and I say they, because I wasn't a part of it, but, um, you know, they got community feedback and teachers feedback and parents. Feedback and students and this is what they wanted to do. They didn't want to make the decision to go to block, they wanted more information and they wanted to know what that looked like and felt like. And, and that decision was made with all of those stakeholders to do this this year for three weeks, to get that data to.
And I, stakeholders, there has to be some, you know, old parents like me that lived through it and there's kind of many of students. Um, there's kind of some of the staff that lived through it, but not all. And then, yeah, I mean, it's just, it seemed like an interesting, yeah, group that. We have different, I, 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 I'm really happy, I don't have to live through it. The mock thing sounds even mysterious of all.
Yeah, it's just the three weeks and I think that our teachers did some really great training on October fourteenth around, around how to do that. And again, the project-based learning and the opportunities to really dig deeper into standards. It's, it's not to do more, it's to really be able to dig deeper and get a, um, a good handle.
I think it was like in college, older, sure, independent, so. But that's how. Classes in the surprise, Tuesday they're doing this, usually their blocks.
I think it's like anything and it means what I'm finding is that we've, you know, we've got the bar here and we set those expectations and we're consistent. Students really are coming up to that. Um, and, and I think that that's the same with us, so we'll, we'll see, yeah, it'll be. Um, we have some upcoming events for you. Um, girls' basketball has started, wrestling starts November first, parent-teacher conferences are the ninth and tenth. Um, we've got the community bizarre that's happening on November twelfth. Um, Azalea Winter Formal Dance is December ninth, if anybody would like to volunteer and come supervise that. Um, okay. Um, and the students in late, I mean, they took a vote, that's what they wanted to do. Um, Azalea Winter Band and Choir Concert is December thirteenth and Azalea Drama, um, class. So we have a class for drama, an elective class this year for drama. And they're going to do a performance and that's just going to be for the parents of those kids, we're not advertising it out, but of course you all are welcome to come and queue with us. They're doing, um, they're doing things around the holiday, they're, they all have skips. It's not, it's not a one major line. So, so they are, they're very funny, they're working on panamining right now and it's really hysterical to watch them. Do something where they open a door and when they go in the door on one way, it opens a certain way. And when they come back through the door magically, now the door opens a different way. And just watching the teacher kind of pointing that out, I'm like, dang it. And so they're really kind of thinking through that process, that's fun to watch.
One, um, event that is not on here, um, is our Turkey Trot. So we're bringing Turkey Trot back. The last day before Thanksgiving break, we will have Turkey Trot and we want to have you all there as well.
And what is Turkey Trot?
Great question.
I was not part of the staff meeting when, when.
Field day.
It's a run, run.
Fun, fun. What other events?
They have other events, they'll have a, they'll have a pumpkin toss event or a pumpkin bowling event.
Egg toss.
An egg toss, um, yeah, there were, there were several events. Our leadership of, of class is putting this on our leadership teacher, so. Of course, none of the students that we have right now have ever been part of it before, so.
Mr. Kleese is helping, he's coming out, I hope maybe get that spin deal for, I don't know. It has not, neither had our fall carnival and it was fantastic, we had hundreds of people at Azalea on that Friday. Um, and, um, and it was, it was a fun time, Nancy was there and took some pictures and really enjoyed themselves and we had. I had a couple students throwing soda bottles in front of the school and honestly, that's the only thing I had to deal with. It was, it was great, it really, really was, so. P T O did a fabulous job. Um, we have a thank you card going around our staff right now, signing for the P T O. And, um, the teachers got together, they have some feedback, just some suggestions for next year. How to expand it and how, how to make it better and then we'll be looking forward to the P T O's feedback as well.
Yeah, good things, both my daughters volunteered at their high school and they were serving food of some sort, so they had good things to say.
Yeah, I got out of having to do the dunk tank. And I was, I was very happy about that because it was really cold, so we were bringing towels to staff and I was checking on them to make sure. I've been through me and it's not been thirty minutes yet, you're good. It was fun, it was a lot of fun, so. Any questions?
No, I don't think so, you know. What can see this and such can teach us.
Now, I'm going to tell you that I feel very supportive, I feel extremely supported by Mr. Marshall. I feel supported, um, by, you know, I've got Crown Apple, I've got Sound Discipline. Um, we really have a great partnership. Um, I think that the staff that we have. We're really getting to know each other and collaborating and working well together. Um, and I, I really do feel like things are coming together right now, but if I think of something, I can.
Hear about it, very. Doing all the work you're doing, all your, your good things.
Thank you, thank you. My coffee.
Keep that.
Thank you, Marina.
All right, well, we have in front of us, pausing previews. Again, this is just given in front of the board, in board first briefing in a couple of weeks, so. Yes, and so if there's, you know, verification, those sorts of things, that that this is the time. Um, and if there's any kind of things to point out, which is largely done, thank you Nancy, uh, in the executive summary. Um, so, um, I want to. Most of them are self-explanatory in terms of not substantial changes, they're just edits and and language clarifications. Um, so do we want to pull out, I mean, there's one that I do want to note.
Well, yeah, it's my question, what is of any note in your kind of opinion?
Yeah, and that's the, actually the budget one is the one I wanted to, to just call your attention to, so that is.
Quick, about the highly recommended comment, so our first batch of fall policies was the required ones and we have one to slow the packet. And then this next batch is the highly recommended, never go to C A, and then the options. Okay, so everything in here is at least highly recommended.
It's just the nature of the group.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. And so, uh, D B E A, uh, the Budget Committee. Uh, and so, get to, what page is that I'm happy to.
Page four.
Uh, and so, um. The, the, probably one of the biggest changes here is that actually, uh, if the board approves this policy, would expand. Uh, the Budget Committee from five to seven, and, and our, our read on it is, is part of the goal and the intent is. For, for one, for broader input, and then to, um. Uh, to be able to have like members of subcommittees and then feed into the Budget Committee, so for example, the Health and Wellness. Optimally, like, a member of that committee would then be on the Budget Committee, so that it is, you know, an informed representative group. Um, our thought and, and, uh, consideration at this moment is, let's maybe not consider that this year. Um, I know that we struggle to get Budget Committee members, and now we need to get one more. Um, and so, it, it's, it's, to, to me, it doesn't feel, it's, it's a good idea, but it doesn't feel like there's urgency. Um, and I'd like to just assume, let, let's get our Budget Committee together for this year, and then, uh, the board can consider this.
I mean, does that mean we're required to have seven?
It sounds like the board has to have seven too, by twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, there's, so we're in large pressure to have a people number of, of our city and budget there, and there's so appointed versus what. I never heard of this, this only says educational, it's weird, um, so, but, but it also refers to this educational equity advisory committee and not budget. So it's almost like a committee that's sort of a subcommittee of the budget, maybe not really the budget committee.
Really, no, yeah, that feeds into it, so this, so they have their discussion, and then they, then essentially like the educational, like, the advisory committee would say. You know, he- here's our priorities, and then that goes to the Budget Committee in terms of. How do we fund and put the resources to support those priorities, and so. Uh, I know, and, and I think the challenge is, is, and I, and Vicky's example is great, is it's awesome if you live in a much larger area. Where you've got, you know, a lot of takers for these groups, and you can really have some, um, some capacity and some work on this challenge with. And not just Brookings, but just small meetings in general is. You know, it, it, as, as you well know, you know, how many different committees is one person on, and different organizations and that sort of thing, and so. Uh, so that, that's just kind of my thought for consideration for the board is, well, let's not necessarily, I mean, we, we can revisit it, but it's nothing that needs to be done this year.
But yeah, we are, we'll be required by twenty-five, looks like, right?
Does that, could you clarify, David, for me, it, it says there that. That the. The Budget Committee has to have seven members. In addition to the board members, and is that, I don't, I don't understand.
To the board members.
No, yeah, so.
Budget committee goes from five to seven citizen members, in addition to board members.
Just in addition to board.
So the board stays at five?
Yes.
Okay, that was my confusion. And cause I, I just didn't understand it.
Kind of worked it backwards and have, I'm sorry, but yes, definitely, and second. Get the budget panel, I was gonna see if there's a budget payment number interested in being on.
Yeah, yes.
Just, because it's so hard to get the budget payment number first.
And start with who we've got there, that's great. Uh, so that was really kind of the big question mark out of, out of these that jumped out at us as, as we were reviewing them. Um, you know, the, most of the rest, I'm looking at, um. There's the titles there, um, they're really not changes in practice, it's mostly language clarification. Uh, or updates and edits, um, and or. Uh, like early return to work, those are practices that are pretty much already placed, the GCB, and, and those sorts of things, so. So, you know, if, if over the next week or two, you review those and you have, uh, additional questions about it. Um, feel free to, you know, I'll make sure and address those at the upcoming meeting, uh, for the first read. Uh, but as you review them, the vast majority of it is just clarifying language or, you know, modification, but not representing, uh, change in practice. Any other questions at this point on the, the pre-read?
Like nothing that puts us in a strange position, but requirement wise, you're.
No, really, just that you don't like, no, no, I mean, cause the, the language there, um. And again, since I, I, I was, um, off for a few days last week. At initial review, the language is mostly edits and clarifications, again, it does not represent, we're gonna do things differently. Um, than we have, so it's clarifying either existing practice and or just updating languages.
I think that's interesting, that we have to add to the policy that we shouldn't make the drinking illegal.
Could you know?
Yeah, that line wasn't there before, right?
It, it wasn't, no, no, and, and. Well, you know, reaction to. I, I believe so, where, well, yeah, there, there were some instances where board said, you shall do this, and it was counter to the rules. Uh, and so it just kind of set up, and, and, and best an awkward situation. Uh, and so, yeah, I think that's, that's in reaction to that, which, um, I'm very grateful and appreciative that this board did not ask me to do anything illegal. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other questions on this preview?
I don't have any.
But we do expect some edits from Janice in the next one.
Some editing, Janice, or some, what do you call?
When I get my paper copy.
We'll get that to you, all the comments.
It's gonna be for you, David, on ODE Integrated Guidance.
I will be, uh, brief on this. Last two pages, oh, perfect, yeah, took the last two pages of the packet. Easier to see, um, so, I think last spring, ODE rolled out, uh, what's called Integrated Guidance, and in fact. You know, DeeDee and I went out to the training, and we got this big notebook, um, and so its intent. Is to align and streamline significant ODE initiatives or requirements. Uh, and so on the, on the second to last page, um, of the, uh, agenda packet. You can see that this aligns, uh, high school success, the student investment account, continuous improvement planning. CTE, career technical education, Everyday Matters, which is the attendance initiative and early indicator intervention system. And so, again, sorry, go ahead, Janice.
I, I got lost, we're out of the policy packet now, and to something else.
The last two pages of the packet that you.
So, for you, Janice, there's two, um, graphics in there that are separate documents.
I have aligning, multi-year.
Yeah, so aligning is the one he's on, and then the other one is the timeline he's gonna talk about.
Okay.
So, um. So that the, the intent is that it streamlines, uh, the work that needs to be done on those, what gets reported to ODE. Uh, et cetera, et cetera, without going into.
Isn't just ODE is always kind of initiative, so they're trying to figure easier ways than I.
And trying to figure out the operative statement. Um, so, it, so far, the consensus, there's, there's a lot of frustration around it. Uh, from the district level, the feeling right now is it really does not streamline, uh, the process that well. Um, and, and so, but it is, it's, you know, it's a good idea, uh, and you can see that they're really trying to on the second page of the timeline. Is get to that, um, continuous cycle. And so I, I think in the end, it, it will, um, it will help with things, but it's, it's definitely was not as advertised. And there's a lot of parts that ODE wasn't even really ready to roll out, but it's kind of a little bit cart before the horses. Um, needless to say, the last superintendent's meeting, they, ODE was not popular with, with this initiative. Um, but our big goal is, um, we really wanna, you know, at least, uh, make some lemonade out of this. Um, because one of the underlying pieces is the, the input and the communications, and so that's a theme with all of these initiatives, it's a requirement with all of these initiatives. We're already doing a lot of data collection, so we're using this as an opportunity to be, um. Uh, more both intentional, targeted, and proactive about getting input from the community and our families. I know that the board has talked about this multiple times, uh, and that we need to do something more than just telling families, hey, we've got a survey out, would you do it? Um, that's, a survey is obviously gonna be part of it, but really, um, using this as a way to, um. To, to get the word out, as well as very actively going and soliciting input directly. Uh, like we had mentioned, going to different businesses and community groups directly. And saying, hey, we'd like your opinion and your perspective on these questions. And so I think that that's gonna be for, for, for Brookings, is gonna be a real positive outcome of this process is. It's really gonna ramp up those efforts, and the other part of this is, uh, cause part of this is gathering input from staff and students. Well, we already collect quite a lot of that, and so actually, what we're right now in the process of. Um, because like for the student piece, they're asking almost a lot of the same questions that we asked on the panorama survey. So if we already collect that specific data, we're gonna use the data that we collect. And not ask the students and the staff the same exact questions again for a different purpose. So, right, so, so it's really a coordinate, you know, being streamlined as possible, and if we already have the data and the information, the input. We're gonna use that in this process, so I think that'll be, you know, at this point, from my lens is the biggest positive of this process is. Um, that really ramping up the work that we started already with, um, being, uh. Very intentional about increasing the, the feedback that we're getting from the committee, and involving the board with it as well. Yes.
Other than these two pages, or what is this body, still not quite where this initiative is.
So it's. Yeah, it says whole notebook here, there's a multi-year timeline, um.
One way to think about it is every single one of these programs requires you to engage all of the same global groups. So that, hey, so everyone from ETOs to, you know, students and families of color, and there's about fourteen. And so if we can engage them all through one process, we could have fourteen different processes, especially in a small district, then hopefully we will burn out.
Yeah, and I think that's probably the, the biggest positive of this process. Uh, on the data collection and the reporting, at this point, it does not seem like it's more streamlined than before. But I mean, again, in the idea that these are all, these are six major initiatives, requirements from. Um, not only ODE, like, you know, high school success and, and those sorts of things, those are like driven by law and the legislature. So OD is the one who, uh, is the coordinator and the implementer, um, but it's not necessarily their decision to say. Oh, here's a new initiative that we need to do, um, it came then from, you know, well, this is what we need to do. For, as part of the student investment account, um, you know, the Student Success Act. This was a mandated part of it, and so again, it is nice to say, well, great, let's, let's. Get input on all of these questions, so that hopefully we can, you know, quality over, I'm gonna ask. The same people, six different questions. Uh, so again, I think that's probably the most beneficial part of it, um, and then it might hopefully evolve to actually be more streamlined. So that these different departments at ODE talk better with each other, um, so that we can submit one thing, and then they can extract their part. That's not on the immediate plan, I think for, for our work is, it's really, um, getting that strong input cycle to inform the planning. Um, that, you know, we already had to do, I mean, we, we did the big piece with the student investment account. Uh, before I got here of, you know, okay, we have this new resource, what are our priorities? And, and that work was done large scale, and with Chris did a lot of that before I got here, and then. Um, and now it's just, okay, here's, here's what we prioritize, here's what we're doing. And so we're kind of checking in, so it's not the restart process, it's more, is this the same, has this changed, are there new questions? Uh, if there's additional resources, what are our priorities, so it's just really, um, doing that. Uh, but with kind of all these and capturing that info, so, so again, I think that will be a benefit, that will help us. As, um, as, as we really dial in that process of, of just strengthening our communication, which has always been important.
That positive.
Yeah, I, I think it will be, it, it will be, it's just, it's, it's been a kind of. Well, the, the timing of it and a number of frustrations that have been expressed by districts, and some of it's beyond ODE's control, so again, it's just like. How do we make the best of it and actually, you know, a- align with what the intent is, and how can we benefit from it? And so I think that's probably the key thing, I think, the communication. Yeah, we gotta do it anyway.
With the whole reporting framework, I imagine.
Yeah, yeah, it's, you know, and, and again, we, we, the, the first official kind of piece of this is due in the spring. Uh, so we're working on our timelines and our data tools and that sort of thing, and so we actually. Um, it's not in here, Nancy did one of those, uh, postcards, you know, the QR code that you scan, so we're going to, um. So those will be handed out at conferences, uh, so really, I mean, it's just some, it's things as simple as that of coming to conferences, hey, we really like some more input. And we're given those to make it easy, in addition to, um, focus groups that will continue to be supported, the ESD did a nice job of. Facilitating, um, specific interest groups that, you know, maybe will only have a small population, but regionally. There's a larger population, so that you can actually get a group together, and last year, the ESD helped with some of that work. Um, regionally, and will continue as well as our own work in, in reaching out to, uh, to the different populations and getting their direct input on the process. So, and that's what we got with that, just wanted to make sure that you were a- aware, and then we'll be hearing more about it as we work through that timeline. Uh, and obviously, we'll be reporting on the information collected as well as, as that.
Okay. That's what I got more, more of it. All right, um, thank you. Well, future workset and topics, um, I recall next month, being an evaluation. Dedicated meeting.
Did we get the, uh, uh, the. Year-round school survey out to the community?
We weren't looking at that for next year, we were looking for.
Well, calendar, but David was gonna send out what.
Yeah, we were impressed, but that, no, that has not happened yet. Yeah. Right.
Priority of December, wait.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I think what we had looked at was like after the holidays. Uh, of looking at gathering some targeted input on what are the questions, is there an interest in pursuing that? Uh, was my takeaway from the board, but it's, it's not our urgent piece right now.
Yeah, you're right, I think, yes, coming back to me, that we, we wanted to tackle the survey stuff in December, and then a couple of. Priority before we get to that.
Yeah, and as I understand it, Steve has, the, the surveys are out there. Uh, getting responses, uh, for the, for the targeted. Student feedback survey, so that, that we're, we're, we're on track for that, um, was it the sixth or December?
Yeah, so yeah, so Steve will report to us that day, right, I think that's the plan.
He had a deadline, it's just another one for dates.
There's a survey closed day in November. I am, the OBA next week, I guess.
Yes.
All right, well. You think with that, Janice, anything else to add?
I'm good.
All right, well, thank you, thank you Heather, thank you everybody, and we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting, so have a good evening.
Thank you.